Okay, we'll call this September twenty-third meeting to order at seven P M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, would you give the opening prayer?
Sure. If we can just take a moment of silence for Mr. Tyson at his passing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And for prayer, dear Lord, please allow us to remember Mr. Bill Tyson and everything that he did for our community, for our region, for our area, and allow us as council members to be an example of Bill and what he stood for, allow us to use, you know, this moment to honor him and continue to make great strides for this community or region in your name and prayer.
Quick call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Booth. Mr. Clement.
Here.
Ms. Sonnen. Here. Mr. Dumpy. Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here. I make a motion to excuse Mr. Booth and Mr. Dumpy.
I don't think you're coming in.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen. Yes. Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes. Okay, we're going to amend the agenda to go into executive session, so I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the executive session. Second.
Second. And Ms. Sonnen. Yes. Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor. Yes. Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Clement.
Yes. So I'll make a motion, we go into executive session to the, under O R C one twenty-one point two-two G for personnel legal matters, invite in Mr. Rowe to discuss pending litigation. Okay. To discuss pending litigation, invite in Mr. Rowe, Mr. Spiker, and Ms. Harmony.
I think Mr. President, Mr. Spiker may have one or two questions for Ms. Harmony, so I don't think she's supposed to be there, so maybe I just come out, just looking at the, shouldn't pay a bit more. That should have to pay for me.
Can I ask a real quick question? You've got a couple of guests here, it won't be like an hour long executive session again, so they have a clue. It doesn't have to be exact, I'm just.
It could be lengthy.
It could be lengthy, okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Second.
Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen. Yes.
And we'll note the time at seven oh five. Okay, I make a motion to return to executive session at eight oh one.
Second. Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen. Yes. Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add ordinance eighty-one twenty-four. Second.
Ms. Clement.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen. Yes. Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes. Minutes from the last regular meeting, September ninth, did everyone receive those? Any additions or corrections? Motion to accept the minutes from the meeting on September ninth. So.
Second. Ms. Sonnen. Yes. Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Clement.
Yes. Okay, and we are now ready for the auditor's treasurer's report, and I understand this will be for June, July, and August, correct?
Correct. Good evening, everyone. It started yet, we do have three months, of course, through the summer. I can start with June of twenty twenty-four, a treasury report. Turn to page one. Total funds at month end is six million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand and four dollars. Next page, the record of investments, total investment funds at the month of June is three million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Turn to here, got the bank and book reconciliation of which June comes to a balance of zero dollars. That is June. And no one has questions on June, I can move to July. Or July twenty twenty-four. The total funds at month end is seven million, two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Flip to the next page, you see the total investment fund for any draw is three million, nine hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirteen cents. Flip the page, then you will see the bank and book reconciliation also found through July come to zero dollars. No questions on July, I can move to August twenty twenty-four. For August, on page, first page, we. Total balances at month end is six million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. On the next page, see our record of investments at three million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. And if you turn to the next pages, you will see that the bank also found through August. The only additional item I have note that you see in the news that they reduced, proved a cut, fifty basis point cut, so that most likely means our next renewals may start downtrending, but I'll keep trying to negotiate the best I can to get the best.
That was a half a point, wasn't it?
Yes. Yes, yeah, a half point. That's all I know for now, I don't know what, if you draw, I would, I'm estimating a downtrend probably in the next year at least, another quarter.
I think a half a point is election year cuts.
That's a good one.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, let's go again. Any questions for me before?
Mr. President, do we have to approve these individually?
Yes, we're going to do them individually, all right.
I'll motion to approve the June treasurer's report.
Second. Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen. Pass. I mean, yes.
Did you say President, pass?
Oh, do you want to vote?
I was writing pass.
Mr. President, I'll motion to accept the July twenty twenty-four treasurer's report.
Second. Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yeah.
Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen. Yes. Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Lastly, I'll motion to accept the August twenty twenty-four treasurer's report.
And last second. Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen. Yes. Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lane, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, you got about five minutes.
Five minutes? There's a lot of information for five minutes, okay. Good evening, City Council, Council President, everybody in attendance, and those at home. These, this will be the June, July, and August auditors' reports, the standard credit card report, and then I've added a new set of information, which I think the folks have already noticed, and I'll go through why in a little bit. I did want to say quickly, a lot has happened since we last saw each other, at least for this report. It stopped raining forever, and then it poured yesterday. There's been lots of change inside City Hall, outside City Hall, and then, of course, we lost two great, fantastic city leaders and former leaders. One was mentioned, Mr. Bill Tyson, a longtime city leader here, and then firefighter Steve Mitchell, who's been a longtime member of the community, the city at large, and the city building, both. So, let's see if we can, financially speaking, cover all this ground as well. I'll start right here at the top. June two thousand and twenty-four, you can see the city's expenses outpaced revenues by a significant sum. July, the exact same trend, but reverse. Revenues outpaced expenses in August, reversed again, which is pretty standard. Some months are more expensive than other. Some months we bring in very large grant and loan sums for the projects, water and sewer projects, and say if that check hits on July twenty-eighth, we might write that check out on, say, August fourth. So it looks like a big two hundred or three hundred thousand come in at the end of July, and you spend it out in August. And considering that we asked for funding from those agencies on a monthly basis, it's actually very common. So I wanted to put a big picture at the end, revenues and expenses at summer's end, revenues have thus far outpaced expenses here in the city of Nelsonville in two thousand and twenty-four. You can see our major fund balances, six point three seven six million across all funds. We'll see the breakdown there between the general fund hovering just under one point two million. These are unexpended pre-encumbrance balances, the street funds, capital, water, and sewer. All mostly within the ranges they were the last time we talked. On a whole, the all funds combined are just a little bit down since the May report. So, since there was three reports, I included for you three statement of cash positions. These are statements of the information about the fund balances, the revenues, expenses, month-to-date, and year-to-date. So the back of the packet is three statement of cash positions, June, July, August. Shows all expenses in, excuse me, all expenses out, all revenues in, as well as encumbrances and fund balances at the end of each month. Excuse me. So, let's see here. Up next on the report is the credit card report for all three months. We do this to comply with a series of state rules on credit card purchases, so I will just briefly say, everything on here, I noticed Walmart, Kroger saved a lot, and Sam's Club were full supplies and concessions, materials for concessions. You'll see at the bottom, utility training was the Cisco software, we had some police equipment purchase, city website hosting, departmental supplies at Amazon, Red Cross, some cool costs for training lifeguards, uniform costs at Galls, Microsoft monthly subscription fee. The city bought some lumber for the boarding of vacant houses at Lowe's. I didn't write down the dates, it looks like it's August second. There's some training, excuse me, actually, there's a series of training costs across the credit card report, including both lodging and the fees for the training. And then, for example, let's see, one was, I believe, Best Western, no, excuse me, Quality Inn, another was Calahari, where the training was actually at that site.
Where are those places? Where did they, where were they trained? In Columbus?
Uh, I, they're across state, well, I got the address on the invoices, but I don't remember off the top of my head. Almost all of our trains are Ohio, yes.
I believe it was Columbus.
I think so.
I guess my point is, if they, if it's in Columbus, do they stay in a hotel?
They do. Yeah.
It's an early call when they're, they're job for training.
So it's a two-day thing, they would probably be there again the next morning at like eight A M.
Some places do have a mileage limit in their policy on how far training must be to pay for lodging. A very common number is twenty-five or thirty miles, per, excuse me, minutes, usually it's a minute calculation. If I remember correctly, the city handbook states that it doesn't actually have a mileage requirement, it just says if the lodging is necessary, then the city will cover, as long as it's approved by department head and city manager and the auditor. So it's a good question. A lot, the city can come up with a policy, I just, as far as distance, but I don't believe there's any. Let's see here. So that's the credit card report. I'm going to take a second to talk about the new report. So very common practice at places that I very much want to not just, well, be as good at, I want to be better than that, I want to be, I want Nelsonville and the auditor's office to be not just as good as others, I want it to be better than, and be these standards. So one of the best practices in the state is that the finance department will submit all payment information to the council for their general review on a monthly basis. It's very common in townships that are going about their finances in a good, best-practice way. It, of course, becomes too cumbersome for cities, say, like Columbus, Cleveland, they're going to write thousands per month. But for us, on just a few pages, for example, there's ten pages here for the entire year so far, so just a page or two, we shouldn't be able to provide all the information for each month. It provides a second set of eyes to catch either mistakes or errors, or maybe even just make suggestions. Maybe a council member will say, hey, you guys bought this from so-and-so, I happen to know the folks across the street have a better price. Or some other, some other suggestion or thought. But it's a very good practice to have the council review on a monthly basis, the all payments. I would like the council to do that, if the council's willing. I'm going to give you information, I can't make you approve it, obviously, council's the ultimate authority here in City Hall, but I would ask your consideration. I will get these reports to you in a timely way, certainly not on a yearly basis like this one, but in a way that's easy to digest and where you have time to get questions. That's my thinking on the check.
I think it's a good thing, anyway. We've had some citizens in the past that have requested, you know, this type of information, so I think that's just an extra layer of transparency, you know, that just allows them to see what, you know, this tells what's been cashed, what's been voided, what's outstanding as the date of the report. So is this also published with your report online?
It is, it's online right now. I will say, too, that it's some, some fiscal offices, well, just some offices in general, they consider sharing information like this to be, to put them on a defensive posture. The state sees it as a very positive sign. If the fiscal office is willing to open up not just the line items, but the actual transaction information to the council and the public, they view very positively on that entity. So I also, to be honest, I want to signal not just to the council and the community that this report would be helpful, but I'm going to signal to those above us at the state, that the city of Nelsonville doesn't just want to meet the bare minimum of transparency, we'd like to be the model. I know that's a lot of information all at once. If you have questions on that, if you wouldn't mind, let me get through the last portion of the report, which will take just a second. I want to remind anybody watching at home, income tax notifications will go out for the third quarter. At the end of this month, if you get a letter from the Regional Income Tax Agency, and you believe it's a mistake, please do call us, let us know, email stop by. The last round, I believe we only found one error, so we're hoping for zero this time, but if you have something, let us know, we'd like to fix it. And I just want to make folks aware those things are coming, and they are coming to you, if you get one, because you have filed on your tax return that you owe city income tax, and Rita is asking for it with the deadline, and so on and so forth. I wanted to speak, hopefully briefly, on the Canal Street and Borough Boulevard projects, this was brought up at the last council meeting, and I unfortunately was not able to make it and answer questions. Canal Street, I'm going to try and approach this from what these projects look like to the auditor's office and how I can be helpful to this discussion. Canal Street is one of the worst streets in town. It's also one of the most expensive to fix because it's so wide and because it's concrete. For four years, four years, the city has been prepping and planning for this project. I don't think, besides the sewer project, I've seen more legislation or discussion than I have about the Canal Street and the Borough Boulevard projects, public meetings and public discussion. Back in two thousand and twenty, the city manager and council at the time asked me to come up with a plan to cover the city matching portion, which at the time was estimated at three hundred, I believe, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is a significant sum for our street funds. But for four years, we have set aside amounts so that we can afford the repair of Canal and Borough Boulevard. Now, the actual amount in the end, as projects do do sometimes, is a little bit higher. I found out last week it would creep over four hundred thousand, which I believe the city can maintain should the council be able to commit those funds. But I just wanted to make sure to bring up, this has been a very public process. I don't manage this project, but I've been in a lot of meetings where this project has been brought up, a lot of public discussion, and frankly, if the suggestion is that the auditor is wrong and we cannot afford this project, I would ask for folks to come up and let, please, for the sake of all of our tires and cars, please let us know what the better plan is for Canal Street, because it's rapidly deteriorating. And out of the entire cost of the project, which I, I don't want to misspeak, I don't manage the project, I believe it's over three million dollars, the city's paying ten, just over ten percent, at least twelve percent.
And just to clarify, Taylor, the city doesn't manage that project either. That's, that's a project that's, the last meeting, it almost was portrayed that the city is, is doing that project, and the city's actually going along with that project, they're partnering on that project, but they're not actually in charge of that project. So, I think Mr. Betts may have, you know, made it clear, but it, just in case it's not clear, Canal Street is, it is not Nelsonville's street project, it is the state's project, we are, we really, we're going to participate, we, we're going to have to participate, so.
Sure.
But just for clarity, because I think it was kind of misunderstood, I think, from the last meeting, that, that, that was Nelson's project, and, and it wasn't. And I think there were some comments right towards Mr. Clement that.
Yeah, I'll be addressing that here.
So that, that, you know, we didn't misrepresent anything on that project, that's not our project, so.
Well, I think it's important to say, too, that the original thinking, when this opportunity was coming to us, was that we were going to try and hit a moving target, you know, almost like you're shooting a bow and arrow out, but your target's moving, and we figured we had pretty much one shot, or Canal Street was going to be like a blessing nineteen seventy-six for the next two, maybe two decades. We seem to be meeting that moment. The, the fact that the cost of the city's portion is a little bit higher than the original estimate, of course, does need to go through all the appropriate channels.
I think that's just a matter of just cost of, you know, goods going up, you know, for the project.
I want to make sure to say this, too, is that the project has a contingency built into it, so once the city is committed, the contingency is built into the cost. It's not that the costs are already going up, it's that they're making sure that the O-Dot heads, that this is good from the start, as they do. They managed our project on the square, went great, looks great, costs were great. It's the same thing, they're paying eighty-seven percent, eighty-eight percent, or eighty-nine percent of the cost, and the city's being asked to pigeon the rest. And again, I, it's, if there is a groundswell of support in this town to not fix Canal Street, please let city council know, but it desperately needs fixed.
I think that.
This is a good opportunity.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I think that Mr. Betts answered all the questions that the individual had, and the individuals still call council alive. And I take offense to that.
Yeah, I'd like to address that. I was not at the last meeting, I was accused of not being upfront with the numbers and transparent about it. When questioned at the previous council meeting, I said, refer to Exhibit A, which contained all the numbers, all the information. So bluntly, I did not appreciate those comments. Thank you.
I will try to finish up here, the, it's been longer than five minutes.
I know.
Um, I'll be representing the city at the Municipal Finance Officers of Ohio Conference this week. I'll undergo over fifteen hours of creditable training on a range of subjects for my position. If you don't know, maybe folks at home don't know, positions like mine, the fiscal officer of the community, must maintain in their first term twenty-four hours of education credits throughout the first term, and I believe it's fifteen, for the second term and every term after. So I'm hopefully getting most of the training done here. Although I do think, I'll be short, we'll need some more, not just to maintain the state requirements with the Fiscal Integrity Act, but so that I can continue to do a good job, or do my best for everybody. Let's see, I covered the new reports. Let's see, I have some items here. I told the police chief, acting city manager, it's actually been a couple of months, that I would report the union contract assignments to the council at my next auditor's report. It's been months since you guys saw me for once, so this may seem like dated information, but just because I haven't been here, these are the assignments under the contract. The reason I'm asking council to review this is because the contract says, basically that section ends with open-ended language, it says, these assignments and more, or something like that. I'm a person that requires some specificity, but I also think it needs to be done on behalf of the taxpayer, so I asked the chief then, and he understood and was good with it, that those assignments would be listed, and there wouldn't be a et cetera at the end. These are the assignments, if council would like to change them, you can do so at a later date. On that topic, retro payments for contract and salary updates are processed now at the door as of this summer. I know there was a M O U that may generate some more, but at the moment, those aren't done. I did want to ask, the. I did want to ask if council would like a report on those, um, at the next meeting? Or if that would not be helpful information?
Uh, yes, I would like a report.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the last thing before questions is Ms. Judy Smith, the deputy auditor here, was on her first vacation, actual vacation, I believe, since I've been here. Um, a bit of a workaholic, we call her. That's why we call her the mayor. So I hope she's not watching this, but if she watches it later, I hope she's a new one. Agreed. So, any questions from council or public after?
So the street levy will be on the ballot in November.
Yes.
As a reminder, um, that is a renewal, not a replacement.
That's right.
And do you remember off the top of your head, that generates ninety, how many, how many?
Just short on it. I'm glad you brought it up. I actually promised I would plug the street levy in for that. So thank you. It's just under a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Each year that the street levy brings in. The county auditor's website has a nice tool now. If you look up your address, it will tell you exactly how much you paid into the street levy last year, um, or this year, one of the two. But it gives you the amount and, uh, um, it's very helpful. And, uh, the street levy does, is a renewal. It will not bring in any new revenues. It's the same levy that's been in place for several decades. Um, I wanted to make sure to mention, it would be, well, considering there's only two funding sources, the two street levies, it would be a very significant disruption to street repair in, uh, the most immediate of which would be council, where basically if the street levy were to not pass the renewal, um, you would have essentially have, the first choice would be, would the Canal Street and Borough Boulevard project go? Or would paving, uh, cost for the next couple of years go? And that is a terrible choice to have to make. Um, so I hope the voters support it. I'm supporting it and, um, uh, well, let's keep our street fun.
Uh, one other question. The, um, the pool has closed for the season.
That's right.
I know there's probably more expenses to come in. Does your office supply us a year-end pool report?
We do that. I think we did that one last year, right?
I think so. I asked for it last year. And with that, we'll be starting on the budget for twenty-five years shortly.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions? Any citizens' comments? Okay, so we have three reports to approve.
Uh, Mr. President, I'll, uh, motion that we accept the, uh, June twenty twenty-four auditor report.
Okay.
Can the, excuse me, sorry. Can the minutes reflect that includes the credit card and, uh, check reports as well for this month? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
A motion that we accept the, uh, July twenty twenty-four, uh, auditor report along with the, uh, the, uh, credit card report and the check report. So there you go.
Um, we love that. You wanted, yes. Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
And lastly, I'll motion that we accept the, uh, August twenty twenty-four, uh, auditor report.
So.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any citizens' comments?
I, well, I do like having this report. It was very well done and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, business and organizational comments?
Mr. Rose, uh, had to leave, so he just asked maybe at the next meeting if he could be on the agenda for, uh, talks. I can see him running for, uh, Athens County Commissioner.
Absolutely. Um, I don't believe any committees met.
Um, are we going to have committee meetings this week?
Um, we could and probably should. Um, I'm not sure when the, when Mr. Sappington will be ready to start on the budget for twenty-five.
Wednesday's good, right?
I will, I'll be at, uh, I'll be at the Municipal Finance Officer's.
Yeah. So we definitely should, uh, be setting that up for next week.
Yeah, we can have it before the next, right? Which is, I think that would be good.
Okay. Uh, department updates. I believe, uh, Chief Barber is giving an update.
So everybody should have a copy of this, like these, you guys follow us that way. Um, so this is going to be the norm. You're going to see this a lot when we give updates. Uh, we're still partnering with Red Cross. We're still the patcher installed in the city. Again, these are installed by our, uh, crew members and it's part of the Red Cross program so to keep their grant going, uh, that has to prove that it's, um, it's working and functional in our area. This is why paperwork is involved in that. So we would actually go out and do the assessment of the home, do the installs, complete the paperwork and have the paperwork just back to Red Cross to keep their program going. Um, fire hydrant testing, fire hydrant testing was paused while they were doing replacement. Uh, we have, uh, some adapters that go on our refusers. One of them broke, so we couldn't do hydrant testing. That just came in, so we're hoping to get hydrant testing going again. Overdose calls have tapered down since my last update. Uh, the new engine is not in service yet. It's not here yet. We brought it, uh, down for Firefighter Mitchell, Chief Mitchell's general services. We are actually still waiting on telescoping lights. Uh, they have them delayed through the manufacturer, so they're thinking mid or late October to get those lights. Uh, nine eleven services this year, uh, many people in the room know, many citizens know, we actually had a crew respond to nine eleven, but we had a crew respond in the evening, uh, in the early morning at twelve. Uh, nine eleven services this year were moved to the Columbus Street side of the public square. We had some individuals that reached out to me and, and expressed, um, the yearning for us to do that because there's a live heat camera on that side of the square. Even though there's no microphone, we still set that up and I moved it to that side. I think it worked out better. Uh, I do want to thank the Nelson Police Department, uh, Tri-County Career Center, had their firing EMS students there, participated in the event as well. The planes on their fire department, they're always there with us, helping with our air foot bear aerial device as well. Uh, the Jacksonville Fire Department, Athens County EMS were there, uh, Mr. Charlie Atkins was there and, uh, council members, Dr. Flowers, Mr. Lawson were there. This was, uh, it was great. We don't usually have, um, our councilmen up at this event, so that's, that was very nice to have that.
It's a nice event too, Harry.
So the big thing really is, uh, on my update tonight is the drought conditions that we're facing. So for a couple of months now, the state of Ohio has been facing a very unique drought. Um, in my twenty-four years of service to the city, I have never seen a drought that's bad in, in, in this area. Um, the State Farm Marshal Office has issued pretty strict, uh, burn, uh, burn ban order for many counties in the state of Ohio. We are no exception to that. We are one of the, we were actually one of the first in the first round, um, to have that. And there's a misconception with the community right now that we had some rain during the weekend, so we're good. The problem with the rain is, the rain's going to hit the leaves, the leaves are going to fall off trees, that water's going to evaporate from the leaves. These weeks, as dry, it's sometimes with sunlight, they're drier than they looked before. Um, our measurements of rainfall with, uh, covering ten different stations in, in the state of Ohio have been very minimal. Um, the amount of rain we had were less than ten percent of what we should be the past three months. So we could rain for hours and hours and hours and we're still going to have dire situations. Uh, did, uh, attach the orders from the marshal's office to the back of this update? It is posted on our Facebook page as well.
For the why?
The burn ban.
The burn ban, they are posted on here so you guys can actually see them. And, uh, my office has direct, constant contact with the marshal's office through, uh, some of our employees and, uh, relationships there. If anybody has any questions about the burn ban, because it is pretty strict, uh, contact my office or contact the State Farm Marshal's office. And this is in effect now and it will be until I'm making enough in our evaluation.
It's the whole state, isn't it?
Not yet.
I know, I saw, but it was a little part of, of southeastern Ohio.
They, they continue to add counties.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's really all I have for the update is, but we really hit on, uh, burn ban and, and it's been pretty, what we're seeing honestly with the community is a couple of people that would have to explain some stuff.
So if you're called to a scene, are you giving, uh, like, uh, warning first or are you issuing citation?
So it all depends on what it is. Um, you know, I've had, we've had different calls on the bypass already from a discarded cigarette, uh, piece of metal falling out of a truck. That gets the road in sparks, that's caused fires. We had, uh, some individuals on an apartment complex that discarded a lit cigarette, which is a fair violation, which could be punishable. Um, but we've now issued a citation. Now, somebody did something careless, correct violation of the burn ban that the marshal's office has in place, um, yeah. Even hot work. So that's another thing. So even hot work for your occupation, so even a shop that's doing welding, they need to get a hold of me before they can do welding right now. So that's how strict this burn ban is.
So this includes, um, barbecuing smokers?
So it's a little yes and no.
Okay.
So if you have an LP fuel gas grill, you can use that outside. You can't have any type of flame that requires, um, a combustible or a, uh, degrading fuel source like wood, paper, coal, charcoal, charcoal, anything like that.
But you can't have charcoal?
No.
But a, a gas grill will be-
Gas grills are allowed.
Because you can stop it. Yeah.
Yeah. Anything that produces sparks or, or brands or embers is, is prohibited right now. Um, the original work from the marshal's office even went as far as saying, "Hey, you can't smoke outside." Well, that's how much it's under force. Uh, so they have to get that down a little bit and their attorney's got to get her, and okay, let's, let's work this a little bit better. I try, I try to keep the, um, the any updates on our page and, and make sure our enforcement officers and police partners about this as well, that way they can get the information out of it. That was really it. I just wanted to make sure I really hit on that.
How many, uh, smoker alarms are we up to? Installs now?
Um, we don't know. We actually don't have a running tally. So when this first started with Red Cross, we went out, you might remember, we went out with Red Cross a hundred years ago and just did a door-to-door and just started installing smoke detectors. We did that, we were probably looking at close to three hundred installs just that one day. So now what happens is I'll get somebody that calls in, say, "I, I don't have a smoke detector in my home", or, "Hey, I've got these guys. Can you come check this out?" And we look, we have. We'll get them an assessment and usually when I get a, a batch of smoke detectors from Red Cross, we'll get twelve to fifteen at a time. They don't have a lot, but as soon as they get that paperwork done, it's, and then it's into them, we should give them a batch. So I don't know whether or not we'll, like-
So are you still putting them up, Harry, or are you giving them to?
So part of their program is we do the installs. We did the install so we know that they're installed correctly. We know they're not installed in what we call that bed zone on the wall.
Right.
And Red Cross can show on paper, hey, these were distributed and installed correctly.
And they don't require you, seeing, being a grant programmer, they don't require you to track that though?
Red Cross tracks it. So the paperwork that we have is that Red Cross paperwork that we fill out with the homeowner and that gets sent to Red Cross. So it's their program. We use it because it saves us money. We don't have to buy some like a pair of some carbon monoxide.
I just, I just, I'd be a good number to know, like, how many people are being impacted by the grant.
We could probably get a number, but a safe number, since we started this, we're probably going to have five of it.
What, do you keep that paperwork copy, a copy of that paperwork?
The Red Cross paperwork that you have it.
Yeah. Those, uh, carbon monoxide, they should be low, shouldn't they?
No, depending on where they are in the patch.
There's a lot of those smoke detectors that are combined with the carbon.
Right.
And, and the drop-
I had mine up on the ceiling and somebody said, "Well, that's-"
Well, a lot of the door per-
Low, it's not like burning, you know?
A lot of the door perches you see will be, uh, total ionization, smoke detector and carbon monoxide. But then you see stainless carbon monoxide detector that wasn't in that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for Chief Barber? I do appreciate you, uh, giving us your recording, right? That's very helpful.
I, I know, I tend to talk fast. I don't need to.
No, you're fine.
It's easy to keep track of.
Right. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next is, um, legislation regarding, uh, the charter ballot initiative. Mr. Rose, did you want to speak on that or wait till we? I don't, okay. So we'll move on to ordinances. We had amended the agenda to add ordinance eighty-one twenty-four.
Yeah, it should be eighty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, eighty-three. Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, I'll, for the sake of time, can we, can we move that to the front of the lines and Mr. Spiker do that?
Yes, um, I'll do that now. So if someone would like to introduce ordinance. Someone would like to introduce ordinance eighty-three twenty-four?
Oh, there it is.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you.
I did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One second. An ordinance regarding a proposed ballot initiative on the question of whether to abolish or retain the Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas the Ohio Constitution guarantees to the people of a municipality the right to choose their form of government. Whereas by Resolution twenty-three zero five, duly passed by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, the city reaffirms the city's longstanding commitment to respecting the right of the people of the city of Nelsonville to choose their form of government. Whereas the purpose of Resolution twenty-three oh five was to clarify for the people of the city of Nelsonville the proper procedures to follow for the ex, exercise of the people's right to choose form of government for the city. Whereas Resolution twenty-three oh five clarified that the proper procedures for lawfully abolishing Nelsonville City Charter, should the people so choose to exercise their right, are set forth in the Ohio Constitution and applicable, implementing state law and not Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas the city is currently involved in litigation over the proper procedures for a lawfully abolishing Nelsonville City Charter in Athens County Court of Common Pleas, case number two-four C one-zero-one-eight-zero and the Court of Appeals Athens County Court District, case numbers two-four C A zero-zero-one-seven, two-four C A zero-zero-two-two, two-four C A zero-zero-two-eight and two-four C A zero-zero-two-nine. Whereas the trial court in case number two-four C I zero-one-eight-zero issued an order on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, stating in relevant parts, quote, "The court orders, a preemptive, limited writ of mandamus ordering Nelsonville City Council members responding tier-in to enact forthwith an ordinance providing for the submission of the proposed petition initiative to the Nelsonville electors in the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four election and that the Athens County Board of Elections certified that relators petition initiative has enough valid signatures to qualify for placement on the general election ballot. Nelsonville City Council shall cause a copy of the past ordinance to be received by the Athens County Board of Elections no later than three P M on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. CRC two-seven-three-one-point-zero-six and State X Brown Sandusky and for Sandusky versus Sandusky two thousand twenty-two, one sixty-nine Ohio, S T third seven oh two. Although the free record is clear that the clerk found relator petition to be sufficient, the record is not clear the number of votes cast in the last general election and that number forms the basis of the ten percent threshold of valid signatures required for the initiative to be placed upon the ballot. That issue is left to the Board of Elections to verify that the petition has enough valid signatures to meet the ten percent threshold under Ohio Constitution. under Ohio Constitution, Article eighteen, section nine. Whereas the city respectfully disagrees with the trial court on the point that, quote, the record is clear that the clerk found relators petition to be sufficient, unquote. Whereas the Nelsonville Clerk of Council has not certified the petition to be sufficient, nor has the trial court ordered the Clerk of Council to make such a certification. Whereas the trial court did not order Nelsonville City Council to act ministerially under the Ohio Constitution. Whereas the trial court instead ordered effectively Nelsonville City Council to act ministerially under Nelsonville City Charter, which does not apply to abolishing the Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas the trial court found a conflict existed between Nelsonville City Charter and the Ohio Constitution. Whereas there is no conflict between Nelsonville City Charter and the Ohio Constitution. Whereas the trial court issued a stay of its September third order. Whereas the Court of Appeals Athens County Fourth District lifted the trial court's stay on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four and noted accordingly, the trials, the trial court's September thirteenth order is currently effective pending appeal. Whereas the findings of fact relied upon the lift. I'm sorry. The findings of fact relied upon to lift the stay are not supported by record fact. Whereas specifically the effect of lifting the stay is to disenfranchise Nelsonville voters who have requested overseas ballots, which voters disproportionately are serving in the United States military overseas. Whereas specifically federal law guarantees to members of the United States military in serving overseas the right to vote in election and the city is not permitted to take action which would deprive members of the United States military the right to vote and thereby violate their federal civil rights. Whereas specifically any elector of the city, including their relatives in case number two-four C. One zero one eight zero has the right and ability to resubmit a petition to abolish Nelsonville City Charter in the future at any time and as many times as such elector desires. So there is no extreme prejudice or manifest injustice. Whereas specifically the city reserves the right to explain in the future as may be necessary, other specific instances in which the findings of fact relied upon to lift the stay are not supported by record fact. Whereas the Ohio Constitution is of superior legal obligation to Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas no court has jurisdiction to order any public body or officer to act contrary to the provisions of the Ohio Constitution. Whereas the city is committed to upholding the rule of law and abiding by the dictates of the Ohio Constitution. Whereas the city seeks to preserve, protect and defend its lawful interests, including preserving every legal argument at its disposal. Whereas the city does not waive any right of the city under any applicable law, including the Ohio Constitution, the Ohio Revised Code, the city, the Nelsonville City Charter and Ohio Rules of Civil Procedure and the Ohio Rules of Appellate Procedure. Whereas council reserves words of future consideration, authorizing and directing future litigation or other appropriate legal actions before any judicial or quasi judicial tribunal, a competent jurisdiction as may be necessary to uphold, preserve, protect and defend the city's lawful interest against unlawful attempts to subvert the city. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council reaffirms resolution twenty-three zero-five, the copy of which is attached heretofore as exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference for all purposes. The proposed petition initiative attached heretofore as exhibit B shall be forthwith submitted to the Athens County Board of Elections to, um, subject to the conditions and prerequisites set forth in sections three through seven herein. As the court stated in its order, the Athens County Court of Common Pleas, case number two-four C. That's an I zero one eight zero. If, quote, is not clear the number of votes cast in the last general election and that number forms the basis of the ten percent threshold of valid signatures required for the initiative to be placed upon the ballot. That issue is left to the Board of Elections to verify that the petition has enough valid signatures to meet the ten percent threshold under the Ohio Constitution, Article eighteen, section nine, unquote. Accordingly, if the Board of Elections determines the ten percent threshold has not been met, then according to the express terms of the order, the initiative may not lawfully appear on the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four ballot. The city takes this action with no further comment on whether the petition initiative is proper in form or substance, such that it is proper to appear on the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four ballot. City passes its disordinance in compliance with the trial orders, I'm sorry, the trial court's order and Fourth District dissolution of the stay of that order. The litigate, the litigation is still on appeal and the city by and through its attorney maintains its previous legal opinions that this matter with full intent to further prosecute their appeal before the Fourth District Court of Appeals, seeking any and all appropriate relief. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as waiving any right of the city under any applicable law, including the Ohio Constitution, the Ohio Revised Code, Nelsonville City Charter, the Ohio Rules of Civil Procedure or the Ohio Rules of Appellate Procedure. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as waiving any argument of the cities in any litigation invoking the city. The city attorney is hereby authorized, directed and instructed, instructed to take all appropriate action according to law to fully vindicate the city's lawful legal position, to protect the city's lawful interests and to represent the arguments and evidence in support of the city's argument, which the city has not yet been afforded an opportunity to do. The city attorney shall give to council a full and complete report of actions so taken at a time set by council. The clerk of council is hereby directed and ordered to provide a certified copy of this ordinance to the Athens County Board of Elections. The clerk shall furnish proof to council once such service has been completed. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of its Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. By members of council voting to defense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one-five and Nelsonville City Charter sections four point zero-nine through four point one-one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, article four, sections four point zero-nine through four point one-one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government to prevent further procedural complications in ongoing litigation while allowing the city and other interested parties to further litigate the merits of, of this matter and is thus necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading the twenty-third day of September, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you for reading that. Uh, motion to suspend the rules. So. Uh, council discussion on suspension of the rules? I'm sorry. Any council discussion on suspension of the rules? Court call the rule on suspension?
Mr. Flower? Mr. Flower?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Any citizens' comments on adoption?
Could you in twenty words say what that said?
I'll give a sound.
You got twenty words.
Are you counting?
Yes, sir.
I want to see fingers.
You just read for nothing.
And you get toes too.
Twenty words. Okay, that's tough. Essentially, the, the city's involved in litigation. It's not going to be twenty words, but I'm trying to make it plain English. Fair compromise?
Absolutely.
Okay. City's involved in litigation regarding a petition initiative to dissolve the city charter. The case has bounced back and forth between the trial court and the Court of Appeals. This takes a procedural step to send the petition to the Board of Elections while maintaining our previous legal positions and allowing that to litigate in the Fourth District Court of Appeals instead of bouncing it back and forth again. This basically just says, we're going to comply with the trial court's order, send the petition to the Board of Elections, although we disagree with their reasoning and we're still going to take that up on appeal.
So what happens on the ballot in November?
That is up, that is still up to the Fourth District Court of Appeals, but this allows them to get to the merits of that issue.
So if we vote on October eighth early, it might not be there.
Then so there, there's another domino to fall. The court, the court, the trial court issued two orders. One to us to do this, send the petition to the Board of Elections. Next, the Board of Elections to put it on the ballot. We're doing our part. The Board of Elections is the next domino to fall. We, we don't know and we can't predict what they're going to do. So I can't tell you whether or not this is going to appear on the ballot and it's also subject to further litigation. So it could appear on the ballot.
And not be valid.
And not be valid. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Appreciate that. Any, uh, council discussion on adoption? Court call the rule on adoption?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-three twenty-four passes. Ordinance seventy-five twenty-four, uh, second reading.
And ordinance pending the two thousand twenty-four appropriations ordinance. Whereas the two thousand twenty-four appropriations need to be amended. Whereas appropriations five thousand dollars into general fund number one hundred, line item one zero zero dash one zero zero dash five zero zero one two repairs and maintenance vehicle for the police department is necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The twenty twenty-four appropriation ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following funds. Appropriations in the sum of five thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund number one hundred. Line item number one zero zero dash one zero zero dash five zero zero one two repairs and maintenance vehicle. The total of unappropriated balances decreased by set amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by set amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately, immediately upon its adoption pursuant to section four point one-one of the Nelsonville City Charter as this ordinance provides for appropriations for current expenses. Duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-third day of September, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt? So moved. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion? Court call the rule?
Um, Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-six twenty-four.
And ordinance to authorize continued payments per run for volunteer firefighters. Whereas it has long been the established practice and policy of the City of Nelsonville to provide payments of ten dollars per run to volunteer firefighters with the fire department, up to twenty-five volunteer firefighters. Whereas city council has determined it is desirable to authorize continuation of this long established practice and policy of the city. Whereas volunteer firefighters with the fire department provide a necessary public service to the residents and businesses of the city with service for which the city is grateful and which the council desires to recognize. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby authorizes and approves continuation for payment of ten dollars to each volunteer firefighter with the fire department for each run for each volunteer firefighter of the twenty-five volunteer firefighters while serving and performing duties for the fire department as volunteer firefighter. The fire chief is hereby directed to take any steps in his discretion, which are reasonably necessary to indicate to the city's volunteer firefighters, the city's appreciation for their continued public service and devotion to the city. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary under law to arrange for appropriations and funds for their payments authorized and directed by council herein. City administration shall take all steps reasonably necessary to ensure this ordinance is included in the next codification of the city's ordinance code of ordinances. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-third day of September, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt? So moved. Second. Any citizens' comments?
That's a cup of coffee and a donut. I think that's a nice thing.
Any council discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Man?
Yes.
And Sonic?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yes. Ordinance seventy-six twenty-four.
And ordinance adopting a procurement policy for the City of Nelsonville for federally funded procurement and project. Whereas federal law and regulations require the City of Nelsonville to have in place a procurement policy for federally funded procurement and project for the City of Nelsonville. Whereas therefore the city is in need of a procurement policy that complies with the requirements set forth in applicable federal law and regulations. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city hereby adopts the procurement policy attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as exhibit A. The provisions and requirements of the city's procurement policy shall apply to any federally funded procurement and or project of the city. Council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time provided by law. Duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-third day of September, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt? So moved. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion? Here goes second. I'm sorry.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion? Court call the rule?
Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance for first reading eighty-one twenty-four. If someone would like to introduce it?
My numbers are all different.
Are we not? Do we have any?
Eighty twenty-four. This is eighty-one twenty-two.
Yeah, that's the first reading, but eighty twenty-four is for second reading. Is that which?
No, no.
Did it vent table?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll be brought back there.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Yes, so eighty-one twenty-four first reading. Someone would like to introduce it?
And ordinance establishing a schedule of time for Nelsonville Mayor's Court in repealing ordinance fifty-four twenty-four. Whereas council has established Nelsonville Mayor's Court to hear such cases as fall within the jurisdiction under Ohio law for a mayor's court for the City of Nelsonville. Whereas Nelsonville had. Whereas Nelsonville had by ordinance fifty-four twenty-four previously set a schedule of fines for Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Whereas the chief of the Nelsonville Police Department has recommended that the fines in the schedule of fines be lowered. Whereas there is a need for council to establish a revised and updated schedule of fines for Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Now therefore, therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The schedule of fines for Nelsonville Mayor's Court is set forth in exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference is hereby adopted by council. The mayor's court clerk shall make the fine, schedule of fines available to any person who requests a copy. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall not be construed to amend any law or fine previously enacted by separate ordinance of council, nor shall any part of this ordinance be construed as impairing or limiting council's authority to amend any law or fine for any offense prohibited by law. Ordinance fifty-four twenty-four is hereby repealed in its entirety. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to establish the revised schedule of fines for mayor's court in advance of the session of mayor's court to be held on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. It will be enacted by council on first reading on the suspension of the rules the twenty-third day of September two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules? Sub move. Second. Council discussion on suspension? Roll call on suspension?
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Motion to adopt? Sub move.
Second.
Any citizens' comments on adoption? Any council discussion?
So does this mean that we're lowering the fines?
Yes.
It does?
Yes. Um, I don't have the table in front of me, but basically it's to lower them so that they're in line with the municipal court in Athens, right? So it doesn't matter which court you go to if, and the point of this is not to restrict the discretion of the magistrate to have an even lower fine, but it's if someone wants to come in and just pay the fine without going to court hearing.
Gotcha.
The police chief thought that the previous ordinance, which were the old fines that the city has had, had used previously were too high in some cases, so.
I, I don't understand what you mean by too high. What, what do you?
Well, so for example, um.
I mean, too high for what?
For the people. For the people to pay. So like, uh, speeding, a speeding ticket. And he just wanted it to be in line with, I think, the, the reduced one is a hundred fifty, and so I got almost two hundred dollars. Uh, and, and then, uh, another one was like, um, failure to control an animal. So these are all misdemeanor offenses. They're all low level, but just if someone doesn't contest the ticket and just wants to pay and be done.
It, it would be that price, but if they come in and Nancy can fine him even more money if it's, is that right?
Um, no, she, she can't, she can't find him anymore. She could find him less, um, if the situation warranted, but she's not allowed to find him more than what the law says. Um, but the, the thing is if someone doesn't want to have the hearing, um, the police chief thought it wasn't right to make them pay more money than if, than they would if, if they came to mayor's court and mayor's court said, yep, you violated the law, but I'm not going to assess the full fine. Cause that, that's a typical practice in magistrate, in, in mayor's court is they are assessed something less than the fine because mayor's court is their opportunity to explain, yes, I broke the law. Yes, I understand. I won't do it again, but here are the situat- my situation, why, why I think it's appropriate to have a lower fine. This ordinance gives them the ability to pay, um, the fine without having to come to, and, and it makes it the same whether they are here. They have the, anyone in mayor's court has the right to appeal immediately to municipal court. We can't stop that. And so the police chief thought, well, rather than creating red tape, let's just have the same numbers apply whether they're here or down in Athens.
So there's no incentive for them to just go to municipal court.
Correct. That's exactly right, Mr. Taylor. That's exactly right. So the point is for everyone's sake, let's just get the, the resolution here in mayor's court. The fine money goes to the city directly. We don't have to worry about creating extra red tape and confusion. Just streamline procedures.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Any other council discussion?
Clerk Collins, roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-one twenty-four passes. Uh, ordinance eighty-two twenty-four. If someone would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
And ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-four appropriations ordinance. Whereas twenty twenty-four appropriations need to be amended. Whereas appropriations of sixty-six thousand seven hundred ninety dollars into street construction fund number two hundred to line item two zero zero dash one five zero dash eight zero 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 nine is necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The two thousand twenty-four appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following fund. Appropriations in the sum of sixty-six thousand seven hundred ninety dollars from the unappropriated balance of the street construction fund number two hundred to line item number two zero zero dash one five zero dash eight zero 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 nine. The total pro- unappropriated balance is decreased by said amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. City auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect of immediately upon its adoption pursuant to section one point, I'm sorry, four point one one of the Nelsonville City Charter as this ordinance provides for appropriations for current expenses. It will be enacted by council on second reading the fourteen, fourteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-four.
Uh, resolution two-three-one-one. If someone would like to introduce it?
I can't find it.
Oh, okay. Got you. Got you.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
A resolution authorizing the city to submit an application for abandoned mine land economic revitalization or AMLR program grant funding and authorizing the city to enter into necessary grant agreements. Whereas the Ohio Division of Mineral Resources Management is seeking proposals to award subgrants of the abandoned mine land economic revitalization fund received from the Federal Office of Surface Mining, Reclamation, and Enforcement. Whereas AMLR program funds are used for the reclamation of sites that were mined for coal prior to nineteen seventy-seven and are awarded to governments and nonprofits. Whereas up to twenty million dollars total is available for grants and anticipated start date for projects in March, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the city has previously submitted a letter of interest and is now prepared to submit a full grant application. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Zee in Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager, acting city manager, and/or police chief is hereby authorized and directed to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for Abandoned Mine Land Economic Revitalization Grant Fund received from the Federal Office of Surface Mining, Reclamation, and Enforcement. The city shall submit the grant application for the win. The city manager, acting city manager, and/or police chief is hereby authorized to enter into any grant agreement necessary for the city to receive AMLR grant funds. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. It will be adopted by council on first reading the twenty-third day of September, two thousand twenty-four.
Are there any citizen comments? Council discussion?
Um, Mr. President, I, I want to thank, um, uh, some folks that were there that, uh, participated in the, uh, public forum that we had on the square. Um, Michael Betts with D L Z, he did most of the presentation, uh, talking about the scope of the project. Uh, Sarah Peaton, who's with D L Z, she's actually the one that's helping us fill out the application for the grant. Um, the grant that we are applying for is, uh, three million dollars. Um, there's twenty million dollars available. There's seventy-six million dollars, um, or a hundred and seventy-six million dollars uh, so far applied for in St. Paul, Ohio, so it's really, really competitive. Um, and so in that process, um, I want to also, um, thank, uh, Ms. LaRue because she's, um, been a great advocate for the city in this, uh, on our behalf on going in and getting letters of support for this grant. Um, we, we're asking for, uh, letters of support for this, the funding of this project and, um, how Nelsonville was impacted by the closing of the mines. And, uh, so the letters of support will go a long way in our, telling our story and, um, you know, hopefully, you know, allowing us to be, you know, put to the top of the list or, uh, to be funded for this project. And so I think it's really important, and I know that I got an email this evening from the clerk of, uh, the county commissioners, so they, she asked for the information. So the commissioners met on Tuesday, discussed that they're gonna offer us a letter of support. We've received one from the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I know Ms. LaRue was going around paying, you know, counting the payment for us and, and getting letters of support, so I want.
Nobody, nobody said no.
And, and that is true. It, it's, it was such a tight timeline for us really finding out about the grant and, and telling, you know, we were told to apply for it, so it was a really quick turnaround because the application's due on the thirtieth. Um, so, uh, you know, it was, it was, you know, we kind of threw this all together in the last minute and, uh, just appreciate everybody's support and, uh, efforts towards it and, um, I'm just, and we had a really nice turnout, to be honest. I was afraid there were, no one would show, um, and we had a decent turnout and, uh, so I, I'm just very pleased. I'm grateful for everybody who participated and for everybody trying to help us get this. Um, Sarah and I spent some time at the library. Miranda LaClain, um, helped us out, get some resources um, with, uh, you know, books, uh, and articles, et cetera, regarding the, uh, um, the mines here in Nelsonville and, uh, so to allow her, Sarah, to be able to take that and put that as part of our, the application. So I just appreciate everybody, you know, such a quick turnaround too, everybody really responding and, uh, participating. So I'm just grateful for that. So thank you.
I sent a letter the same day, by email. Thanks. Thank you.
I think the one thing that really helped was the fact that the letter could be sent by email.
Oh, yeah, it just went.
That was, that was easier. A lot of people really liked that aspect of it.
Any other council discussion? Um, motion to adopt? Sub move. Second.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three eleven passes. Uh, resolution twenty-three twelve, if someone would introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
The resolution addressing the city's support for Stewart's Opera House grant application for abandoned mine land economic revitalization program grant funding. Whereas Stewart's Opera House is a cornerstone of the historic Public Square in Nelsonville, Ohio. Whereas Stewart's Opera House was built in eighteen seventy-nine as a theater and community center for the use of the residents of the City of Nelsonville and helped establish Nelsonville as a vibrant center of arts, culture, and commerce. Whereas Nelsonville was an economic center of southeast Ohio based on a distracted mining industry operation. Whereas Stewart's Opera House is seeking funding through the abandoned mine land economic revitalization grant program funding for upgrades, renovation, and repairs to the building. Whereas the city wishes to express its support for Stewart's Opera House's AMLR grant application. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City hereby officially expresses its support for Stewart's Opera House grant application to Ohio Department of Natural Resis- Resources for Abandoned Mine Land Economic Revitalization Program Grant Funding. The clerk is hereby directed to send a certified copy of this resolution to O D N R. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. It will be adopted by council on first reading the twenty-third day of September, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
Uh, so, Mr. President, I'll just, uh, clarify on this. So, uh, Stewart's is supporting, uh, Nelsonville in their, um, uh, efforts for the grant, uh, for the AMLR grant. They too are applying, so I felt it only appropriate that we support them in their efforts. They shared with us their scope of, uh, plan. They attended our, um, public forum. Uh, they have some, you know, elevators, you know, upgrades, et cetera, that they need for their facility, so they're also applying. There's, I think, is one point three million is what they're seeking. Um, but I just felt it was appropriate that we support them as well. Um, they're supporting us and they are a Nelsonville asset for sure.
Yes, hopefully, hopefully, uh, both entities will, uh, be successful.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Yes.
And if one ain't, the other one might be.
That's true. Absolutely.
Yes. Any other council discussion? Motion to adopt? Sub move. Second.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three twelve passes. I don't believe we have a city manager's report in mind. So we'll move on to, uh, go to the order.
Yes, may I just say one thing real quickly? Um, several members of council have asked me for an opinion about, um, the scope of the open meetings, law respect to certain, um, meetings. That is just a work in progress. I, I hope to have that together, uh, next month to present to council. It's just, there's, uh, a tricky issue of law that I just needed to go down and insert before I can get them a, a full report to council, right?
Great. Thank you so much. Go to the order. Mr. Sonnen, would you like to start?
Well, again, I would like to give kudos to Ms. LaRue. But it was your idea. Well, you were the one that did the legwork and I am so appreciative of that. You're, you're a great help to the city. You really are. Thank you. I enjoy meeting with you.
Mr. Flowers?
Uh, no, I don't have any.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Happy official fall as of yesterday. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Lawson?
Well, first of all, I'd like to commend the police chief for the outstanding and professional, uh, rendition of Memorial on, on nine eleven. Stay out up to the, uh, square, uh. If you didn't show, well, you missed something. Again, you see a bunch of professionals. Tri-County Careers Center appreciate their help in coming down and all the, uh, resident fire departments that showed their support and everything. Uh, I'd also like to commend the fire department for their rapid response last night to a power pole that was on fire down here on Chest- on Chestnut Street last night, early in the morning. They was there quick, isolated street, got, and got the power company down there, got it out, corrected in record time. We're coming up to vote. We need individuals. I don't care who you're voting. We need individuals, I don't care who you're voting for, Republican, Democrat, whatever. You need to go through and we need the people turn out to vote. The only thing is, everybody in the city of Nelsonville has to be advised that their polling station has changed for everybody in city of Nelsonville. No longer will it be the Wesleyan Church. No longer will it be the library. It'll all be the old Spruitt Building where the, uh, Ohio Job and Family Services has taken over at this time. So we need to get out to vote. And that's all I have.
Thank you. The only thing I have is, ooh, one second.
Well, you can go first.
Go ahead.
Well, and you can go downtown and vote early too.
Right, you can vote early. I suggest people do get out and vote early.
That's number one. My, my second one is I do call in on the thing, and this was on my citizens' comments, but we, we didn't make that. Uh, I called in because, uh, I wanted to see, uh, code enforcement officer report. And and I didn't hear anybody bring it up, but I did call in saying we needed one and I just wanted to really in, request it again. I think you'll be pleased with mayor's court.
Yes.
What the code enforcement officer is going to be there.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm confused. The heck out of me.
Sorry about that. I got that. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. The only thing I have is, I hope the weatherman is right. It appears that we do have some rain on the forecast and we can get past this, uh, situation that we're in with the drought. That's the only thing I have. With that, motion to adjourn. So move.
But don't forget what Harry said. It's going to take a lot more than what we're getting.
Absolutely.
Did Mr. Rob have something he was going to say?
Oh, just that I had that report to council.
Do you want to shut that off?
His questions.
Not yet. We haven't taken the vote.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I thought we did.
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.